Like up semi-permanently around Pegbon Center.
Last year, we agreed that they would have to take down the sides that they're taking down on a weekly basis, so long as they posted signage along the Houston Street sidewalk to indicate the reason the sign that the fencing is up is for the Summer Concert Series. And actually, Kim Hansen is here this evening from the Park District because one of the things that they would like to propose is to put up a different kind of fencing around that area, which is the aluminum with the vertical bars in it that is more akin to something that you would see at an event versus, you know, last year, the complaint about the fencing is that it looked like that area was under construction.
I don't think it's going to have that feeling. I saw the-
...use money into squaring off an area if we can come to an agreement of this designated area. I mean, especially on Wednesday nights, that area of the grassy land, this is where you can consume your alcohol. I would like to see what can be presented to us and what we can come to before all these entities start investing money in this type of fencing, unless the Park District feels like they can reuse the fencing. But I would like to see what other communities are doing and what options of creating a DORA in a more natural setting.
Naturally, the concern on the part of the Police Department is that a sign posted with no alcohol beyond this point in areas requires that people just self-regulate. I don't anticipate that the Park District would have sufficient personnel for the Concert Series events, and Kim can chime in on this to be able to patrol that themselves.
As a participant that goes every Wednesday, that is not a crowd that is there to party and to create ruckus. They are there to have some beverages and to enjoy some music. And at the end, everybody gets up and very nicely walks away with their belongings and even their garbage. So again, I would like to see what other alternatives there are of what other communities are doing before we start requiring investments for all these special events.
Okay.
If I could chime in, one of the primary reasons for the fencing requirement is it's required in our city code for the Class F and Class G liquor licenses. The ordinance requires that outdoor air consumption is fully enclosed by fencing walls, partition, or similar materials. So we are just following the current liquor code with regards to these special events. Now, I wouldn't recommend eliminating the fencing requirement altogether. But if the City Council wants to consider amending the code and look at some kind of projected attendance assessment and then make a determination on specific events that may or may not need fencing, certainly some of our larger, more substantial events like Window City Fest, where you have carnival mixed with children, mixed with, you know, all different sorts of activities and thousands and thousands of people coming to the downtown area. I think there would be a blurring of the lines and people would have a difficult time understanding where they can and can't take alcohol and could result in alcohol being transported in locations where it's not supposed to be in such a large event and footprint. But if there are smaller events where there is an interest in trying to eliminate this fencing requirement, I think as long as there is some thoughtful consideration of, you know, how we regulate that, how we create clear signage in order to prohibit the alcohol from leaving the area. And I agree generally, the attendance at these events is not people looking to just, you know, take alcohol outside of event areas and things like that. It's just a matter of ensuring that we have clear signage and that this isn't a blanket thing that we're doing for all special events where we're eliminating that fencing requirement.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to- this is Kim from the Park District. I just want to let everybody know, I think we would be more than happy, obviously, to not have to spend the money. And if we could find an alternative, some sort of a natural solution would be amazing. I'm sure we would be able to come up with something if we were able to go that route.
I have a question. Do we allow- do we allow other entities or people that are applying for these permits to leave their fencing up all the time? Is my question.
No.
Maybe a natural, a natural well-manicured hedge, something that clearly defines a space would be a good alternative probably to fencing that's out there. What does, does Crystal Lake or some of these other cities, do they do some of these options of natural delineation of areas? Because I am totally for the DORA. And as we have more development in downtown Batavia, we will have more restaurants, other places to where like right now, like River Street is very confined, where you really can't go anywhere except for north and south. More so Houston, not Houston, Water Street and over by Riverside is a little more open. But I don't think that they have requested to do anything like that. But getting the idea of what other cities that are doing well with this would probably be a good idea as we start to develop and build, we can start seeing what works, what doesn't work, and continue to build on those things.
And to touch on what Crystal Lake has, really, they have two or three relatively small areas that they classify as Doras. You could call them like very small parks. I mean, nothing of the size or substance of the Pegbon Center area and the grassy area out there, but considerably smaller than that or a courtyard between businesses. And then their primary method of control is through signage, just advising individuals when they are entering and when they're leaving the DORA and what the requirements of the DORA-
Flower pot with a sign in it.
Thank you.
Correct.
Sarah?
We were on a call with the Economic Development Director from Cornelia, Georgia, talking about the DORA. They have called it an entertainment district. And it was every six feet that they have a red thing on the sidewalk? Fifty, fifty feet, every fifty feet, just slight difference. So every fifty feet, there is a giant red square on the sidewalk that says you are in the Cornelia Entertainment District. So it's all over the sidewalks. And then they basically made it their entire downtown, right? Yeah, so their whole downtown has these squares. And then there is a different kind of square when you leave the district. So once, if, you know, you're on foot, it is very clear if you are inside the boundaries and then when you exit the boundary. So that is all the signs. And then all of the stores, restaurants, businesses have signs on that say you are welcome to bring your beverage in or you are not welcome to bring your beverage in. So that is how they do that. And they really have not had, the police have not noticed an uptick in mayhem happening as a result of instituting this policy in their town. So it's really interesting. They have noticed a huge growth in economic development and in investment in the town as a result. Everyone wants to be within that area.
Yeah, and that's something that I've noticed the last time I was down at Starve Rock coming back through Utica. They have literally the entire, not very many blocks, but the entire downtown of Utica is basically fenced off and open air between all the businesses that are down there and all the restaurants and bars that are there. And it looks like they've actually built another, just south, if you're familiar with it, the Road Y is out right there to go back to 178 as it comes in, or Y is as it goes into the downtown. And they have what looks like a music venue. It's got a stage and like a round circle stage and then a fenced-in area that's all high-top tables. There's probably 50 of them in it. And that's about half a block size of it. It looks like they've built a second one of those about two blocks south after the museum and the other things that they have right downtown that's almost identical to that one. So I'm imagining that they're trying to use it for two different things in their downtown. But there's so much going on there every weekend and so many people, you know. I look at that and think, okay, that could be what we do with River Street and our downtown in the future is be able to utilize those areas. And it wasn't like it was walled off with a six-foot-high fence or anything ugly. It literally was, I think, some of the fencing was the aluminum fencing that we saw in the email. And I think that's basically so they can get stuff out of the way so they can get deliveries in, you know, mid-block and other spots in their downtown. But throughout the whole weekend, it's closed off. And it might even be throughout the whole summer that it's closed off in the one section. So that was one that I know that was pretty close, and I wanted to go take another run down there and take a look at it. But that's the kind of thing I think we should think about is there are differences to the different areas. And I don't think that we should completely get rid of the fenced-in area because I think there are times, especially when you have an event that goes to 10 o'clock at night or in the past, we had other events that were longer than that. You would end up with enough people and enough alcohol there that the possibility of it leaving that area had to be controlled. I look at the farmer's market. I don't know how many Bloody Marys and, you know, things that get sold on Saturday morning, but I never see them leave. I never see anybody walking down Wilson Street with one or over on Houston Street with it. They just don't leave. They're there in the area where they are, and that's where they stay. And I think, in a lot of respects, I think people respect that, you know, that they have that ability to walk down the street or to leave one restaurant and go down to another bar and not have to dump what they have. They can just go back out, sit out at a picnic table and enjoy that. So I think that's part of the area that we've created is that mood that you can do that.
Leah?
I just want to say I am in support of further discussion of this. I think it's, I think there's some great potential for our downtown and our downtown businesses. Anything we can do to attract people to come down here in the evenings, on the weekends, is going to benefit our city tremendously. And I think in further discussions, you know, even Chief brought this up a little bit, but the different type of events, you know, where fencing might be required or not. So if it's a single event like Cocktails in the Park, you know, one where that's just a couple of hours, you know, where that might not require fencing, or the River Rhapsody concerts. But longer events that are like full days or full weekends, you know, that might require fencing because, or as you were saying, ones that go late into the evening. So I think that's all stuff that can definitely be, we can talk about with the liquor licensing and stuff. But I think overall, this is, would be good for our town and our businesses.
All right. Beth and I will continue to work on it.
Okay. Thank you. And now we'll move on to item 18, which is a discussion on reducing the frequency of cow meetings to the second and fourth Tuesdays opposite of the City Council meetings.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we heard that.
It'll require some coordination, you know. I mean, our meetings, because we do have them every single Tuesday, it can be kind of a feast or a famine situation. But I think tonight's meeting is a perfect example of how we've been able to go through 18 items on an agenda in just over an hour's time. And so from staff perspective, we'll try to make sure that once we get to 20 items on an agenda that we say, hey, maybe there are some that can wait two weeks for that next committee of the whole meeting or when things are light, to make sure that we put in some of these discussions like we did today about the perimeter fencing requirement for special events where, you know, we can try to keep these meetings to two hours or less. And we like to just experiment and try. I'm not sure that we can get to where Geneva is at, where they have, they only meet twice per month. And they meet for 30 minutes for a City Council meeting and, you know, then they have their committee of the whole meeting thereafter. But I sure would like to try to, having, you know, get us to be at one meeting per week if everyone is amenable to the experiment.
I think you've done a good job of coordinating it. I mean, just in the last two months, we've had several meetings canceled. I would rather see it posted and canceled than eliminated because I think there's a lot of things that can be discussed. Like this discussion, I think, could go on.
Absolutely.
We could put more time into it as opposed to taking away.
For sure.
I know, I mean, it's always nice, it's, the other concern I think would be, can we even make that, I would want more meetings on the City Council meeting and cancel where if there's permitting or things like that, where we can do it faster for-
That's just the thing is these meetings, the day after the City Council meeting, aren't speeding anything up.
No, they're not.
Because the final approval doesn't come until the next City Council meeting. But we can, we can have committee of the whole meetings whenever we want to. It's the City Council meetings that have to happen on the dates that we publish before the year starts.
Right. And anything we can do to foster a meeting, to get a process done so we can go to City Council faster, I would be for. So-
Yeah, a lot of times, those things are driven by the timelines of the public notices and then have to have the public here. It's just the steps to follow. But the meeting in between the City Council meeting, that means it has to get done there.
Right.
I think that that also puts a little bit more pressure on staff to make sure that they align things when, especially community development, they know they have public notices and meetings that have to happen a certain amount of days before the council approval on something, that they make sure that they get those things done. One of the things that I thought about after Laura and I talked about this the last time we discussed it was also probably keeping that those several out of the year, the fifth Tuesdays that are, if any of those are available, keep those. And whether we use those for regular business or whether we put a little bit more emphasis on our strategic planning and our review times and things and use those extra, you know, that fifth meeting in a month's time, that we use that so that we try to get as much done on an even basis, not, you know, overloading and having an 11 o'clock meeting and then having a meeting that has three items on the agenda.
Budget would be a perfect example. When we have the budget meetings, maybe we'd have to utilize those Tuesdays after City Council meeting for our budget meetings that month.
Right. And I think this is something that we do when we try out and see how it works out over six months and go through a budget cycle with it once and then come back early in '23 and talk about it. Is it working? Is it not working? How does it help us? Has it helped us? You know, how is staff dealing with it? You know, those questions, I think, we'll need to come back and answer at that point. But I think this is something that could help, one, the amount of meetings that we have, definitely. But I think it could also keep us really on task, that we don't just kind of push things off or, oh, we can talk about that next month because we have, you know, more meetings we could have. You know, for cow meetings.
Scott Buening has his hand up.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I've mentioned before that I try to purposely do every other cow for that purpose. I've worked in a number of communities that we've had only two cows a month. And I try to schedule it that way so that, you know, we're not going to every single Tuesday because from our scheduling purposes, it's really not necessary for at least my department. But, you know, it seems to work fine. And if we have something that's urgent, then we schedule a special meeting we need to.
Okay, that kind of answered my question because Nick, you brought up, you know, you'd rather have it on there and then canceled. For my purposes, at this time of year, I'm just swamped with negotiations, especially after two years of pushing everything off. I know a couple of school districts would be pretty happy if my, if two meetings came off a month. But for scheduling purposes, if it's, I understand if there's a need for an additional meeting, that'd be a special meeting added on rather than scheduling them all, canceling ones we don't need.
Right. We can schedule any meeting we want with 48 hours' notice.
I just, I would rather, I mean, in contrast, I would rather have go every Tuesday and have two-hour meetings and then two Tuesdays a month where I have four-hour meetings.
Oh, that's not the intent. If we end up having two, that will be a fail.
Right.
That will be a fail.
We won't have to wait till '23 to talk about that.
Well, I also don't want-
In my opinion.
I want to foster more discussion, not say, hey, we're, you know, let's get out of here. You know, it's been three and a half hours, like let's-
Not at all.
In the longer, I know that's not the intent, but that's what I'm worried about. In my life, my Tuesday nights are, I know I'm here. So whether, you know, when they're canceled, it's like a bonus. Now, when the third one's added, I'm going to be like, oh, shit, we got a third one.
You know, similar, similar to our permitting processes. There's nothing wrong with becoming more efficient and so that the timeframe for things is shortened so long as we're not eliminating the quality of what's happening. But there is, you know, time in our meetings here too. If we know that we have a lot of business to conduct, we might conduct our, get all the questions answered, but realize that, you know, for instance, some nights when we have a lot of outsiders here, whether they be our own consultants or we realize there's a developer here who are paying for their professionals to be alongside them. We try to manage our clock to kind of put them up front and make sure that we get through things efficiently because people are paying for those people to attend our meetings. But, you know, just like I said, I'm hoping that it's an experiment. We can all work together on it and try to just become more efficient and maybe free up some Tuesdays.
No, I think it could work. I just, we brought this up a few weeks ago in jokingly. I'm like, I know, especially for staff, I mean, to be here every Tuesday is wrong. But it would, for me, it would be great to have two Tuesdays here and then the third Tuesday, we're at Riverside and it's published and the staff doesn't have to be there. But we could talk about things that, you know, that we can't, you know, we're kind of limited so much by, you know, the public forum and not being able to talk about stuff.
Yeah, you're limited by the Open Meetings Act though because then you would need to post the notice of where that meeting's happening. You would need to have Jenny meet you there and somehow record the discussion and create minutes that then would be approved.
And I never experienced a time, and maybe Ellen, you know, you were here when it was actual committees where you sat down and, you know, really hashed things out. I mean, not that we don't do that now, but-
The interesting thing I'll say, when I thought about this, because you had mentioned that before, is when we had separate committees for everything, there were times when we would get to a council meeting and that committee meeting would happen again because half the council wasn't there.
Right.
And that's one of the things that's been so much-
I'm not proposing to go back to committee meetings. I am not.
From my perspective, it's been so much better that we have the opportunity as a committee of the whole to be able to discuss that and get a real sense of what the majority of the council feels on any issue and get all those questions out before we get to a council meeting so we don't have another committee meeting within the council meeting. Because that did happen all the time.
Or you just tune out and take the advice-
Right, or you immediately know that nobody read the-
I just don't want to-
Info we got.
To do more of the process, like we go through the process, it's more on staff. I mean, they do a great job and we're, you know, shuttle down the right path and it's easy to say aye. But the discussion times and the really making the sausage stuff is where I'm concerned. I don't want to cut time there.
Sarah?
Didn't we add meetings in November? We had a couple meetings, a couple weeks ago, it was two meetings, like in a row because there was the budget and really heavy preparations. But Laura, I really like what you said about just making, like increasing efficiency. Because if we do know, it is kind of like, well, we can talk about that next week and we can, you know,
That happens.
Every other week, then I think it would be just a little bit more, I don't know, focus is the right word. Possibly more efficient.
I think so. Thank you.
Okay, so I think, I would like us to try this, you know, whether we do it for three months, six months, whatever it is, if we get through this three months and we don't like it and it's a disaster, we'll stop it. We'll go back to where we are now.
Does that put us at November? Let's not end at November.
That would be bad. I was thinking through the end of the year.
Yeah.
Come back and have it.
Come back and we'll talk about it.
Right.
Unless it's a disaster.
Right, unless it becomes a disaster, then we will change it back. And that's not something that's difficult for us to do.
Well, I'm just keeping that we're meeting every Tuesday anyways.
You could, and I'll follow Alderman Saron's advice to post it as canceled. That way, there's still that placeholder there.
And I'll probably come down and I'll be like, well, I guess I'm going to Bar Evolution for bingo.
All fourteen of us.
I get to go play bingo now for Bar Evolution on Tuesday.
But I still don't get to go to the Lyceum events because they're on Monday nights and they won't change. Okay, we'll move on then to item 19, which is project status.
Okay. Last week in the law enforcement torch run presented a check for $3 million to Special Olympics Illinois at the Summer Games in Bloomington, Illinois. And the Batavia Police Department had a couple of officers who were present for the ceremonies and games. And they were there to cheer on the athletes and also to present them with medals. It's a cause that is very near and dear to the Batavia Police Department. They participate in events throughout the year in order to raise funds for our Special Olympics. And toward the end of summer, we are also going to see our cops on top at the Dunkin' Donuts. And I hope that the community will come out and support them for raising those funds again. The Police Department has also been diligently working alongside other community stakeholders this week to make final preparations to ensure the safety of all who will be attending the upcoming Fourth of July festivities, the fireworks and sky concert. And also, the Batavia Police Department has been assisting the BPS 101 and Batavia High School, who on Thursday will be receiving the stadium upgrades. So for that, a portion of Wilson Street will be closed at some point between 8:00 a.m. and noon. So on Thursday, if that's part of your morning commute, you may want to find an alternative to that. Otherwise, you may be slightly delayed, but it might be interesting to see the spectacle of entire stadium seating being delivered also.
Did they get the light poles?
They got the light poles, yeah.
Was that the town didn't get the-
Yeah. In Public Works, a reminder for all citizens to abide by the city's odd-even water sprinkling regulations. Water conservation is so important, you know. We have had a water study done to show that we do have a very reliable source of water for the city for the next 20 years at least in our wells. However, water conservation is something that is extremely important and that we should not have a 20-year view of it, but a 100-year view of it or a several hundreds-year view of it, that the actions we take today can really have an impact. And this is especially important on hot days like we had in the last couple of weeks. The water system has been treating and pumping near-record-high daily volumes during those hot days. So we appreciate everyone conserving water as much as possible. Final landscaping is in progress at the East Side Basin, part of the Mahoney Creek Project on Kirk Road. And that would be located on Fermi's property. And then also wanted to let you know that the City Hall remodeling plans have both been submitted to Community Development for permit review and also that they are going to publication for requests for proposals. And those bids will be opened on August 2nd. Main Street requested some bike racks to be installed over on South Batavia Avenue, and we have installed four. So there are two that have been installed in the parking lots of the east of those, I'm sorry, to the west of those. I'm sorry, to the west of those buildings. And then there's one in front of Beards Guard and one in front of the Goslin Law Offices. So four new bike racks over in that area. And last but not least, I wanted to announce that, um, Drew Rackout has been promoted to the Planning and Zoning Officer to replace Joel Strassman, who is retiring after more than 15 years of service with the city on July 15th. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions for?
Thank you.
Good news.
Good news.
And I think the only other that I know of is the.
Yes.
Slow down.
Uh, renewal.
The new signs are in.
The new signs are in. This is, uh, the new version of our slow down campaign. This is the third, uh, campaign that we have done and we decided to trade in the old black and yellow signs for something new. So this here, we will be slowing the fast down and we have signs available here at, uh, City Hall and on the back are instructions on where to put those because we do not want to take the slow the fast down signs and put them in the boulevard, thereby creating line of sight issues and a whole new type of driving hazard. So what you want to do is install those signs on your property, not in the easement and your property would be on the house side of the sidewalk from you. But we hope to see hundreds of signs out there. Um, and again, you can pick them up at City Hall.
I have another. I should have asked this before, but is Scott still on the line?
I think he is, hang on.
Yes.
Yes.
I am.
The, uh, public hearing and those, uh, properties on Hart Road when they're annexed, are those properties sidewalk-able, if that's a word?
Are they able to put sidewalks across the frontages?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we would, uh, be looking at those, um, like our 100-year sidewalk plan as to where the priorities are. Um, right now that part of Hart is, is, um, unincorporated, so it's not in our jurisdiction. I know that one of the, um, residents in that area had some concerns about a recent accident that happened there. Um, and so, you know, I basically told them, well, there's really nothing we can do until it's annexed because, you know, we have no jurisdiction over the road until we take it over, so. Um, but, you know, certainly that, once that's annexed, um, we could put sidewalks across that frontage. Um, development would do it if they decide they're going to develop the property, but, um, from my discussions, none of those folks are looking to develop those properties.
Okay, because I think if I know the prop, like it, it kind of, from the road, it goes down into a little gully for, for water to, to go path, but it, it can, I'm just glad to hear it can be done.
Right.
Yeah, because that, that would be one of those connections where you'd be able to connect different ends of the neighborhood to the bike path.
Yeah.
That's down there where we have bridges that were built.
Right.
You know, to get, to get across there. Right, and to make it easier to walk to and from the middle school from a lot of those neighborhoods along Hart Road.
Yeah. Which there is great money for that too.
Right, and, and, yeah, and that's something that I think we should definitely be looking at as soon as we get these annexed in and then the rest of the annexations along that side. And I really probably think the east side of the road is probably better to try to put a sidewalk in down there on that side of Hart Road.
Yeah, there's places where it ends and then there's like across the street.
Right.
You have to like, oh, we run across the street to the sidewalk or try and play chicken with the cars.
No, not on Hart Road.
Well, we've done it.
Okay, right. Not a good thing. Okay, does anybody else have any others? If not, I will need a motion to go into executive session for setting the price of land for sale and I do not expect any action to come out of the regular council meeting afterwards.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Uwer, second by Malley. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogel Singer?
Here?
Aye.
Aye, okay, sorry.
Miller?
Aye.
Masato?
Aye.
Beck? Connolly? Chanet? Sulfah? Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Agazi?
Aye.
And Malley?
Aye.
Motion carried.